Cell phones. And welcome to the regular meeting of the Beaumont City Council. Today is Tuesday, March 7th, and today's invocation will be given by Mrs. Beth Graham. She's a Senior Minister of First Christian Church of Beaumont. In recognition of Women's Month, all month long, invocations will be given by women. If you'll please come forward. Thank you. Please stand if you so choose and remain standing for our pledge.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for inviting me to give you the invocation. Let us pray. Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice. We ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work and play. Help them as leaders to not ask first, "How do we fix this?", but what do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen? Remind them, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate today, that they are not only leaders, but also servants, and that it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it's time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it's time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy and all that we hold good, right, and true. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in the pledge. To our nation's flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Reverend Graham. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muton.
Present.
Mayor Protim Duriel absent. Councilmember Getz absent. Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Felschaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
There.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have one recognition, and the recognition is honoring pioneering women, and I will read as follows. Whereas Pioneering Women was founded in 2003 by Mrs. Georgine Guillory, currently has 25 members. It has honored 233 women in the Golden Triangle and assisted 266 students with scholarships to higher education institutions. Whereas Pioneering Women mission statement states that women have always been an integral component towards the success of society. Pioneering Women are committed to enhance, empower, encourage, and improve all women and girls through the utilization of accessible and exiting resources, organizations, and empowerment opportunities available to them. Furthermore, the Pioneering Women mission is to assist women to achieve greater heights, which will improve their quality of life. Whereas Pioneering Women highlight local women from mayors to moguls, journalists, judges, and every occupation in between. Pioneering Women shines the light on the obstacles that women are climbing and the barriers that they are breaking down. Whereas every year in August, Pioneering Women celebrates six local women in the community who mean business as they are taking a journey, rising to the top while dancing to their own drumbeat and ruffling some feathers along the way. Now therefore, I, Mayor Robin Muton, City of Beaumont, do hereby recognize and proclaim this day, the seventh day of March 2023, as the pioneering women in Beaumont, and extend sincere appreciation for the good work they do in the supporting of the women in our community. Accordingly, I have here and to set my hand and the seal to be affixed on this day, March 7th. Signed, Mayor Robin Muton. And accepting this recognition is Pioneering Women founder, Georgine Guillory, and Marlene Guillory, President. Please come forward to accept your recognition. Thank you.
You know, I pay attention to a lot of things, and I saw that lavender up there on the wall. I say, "Oh, they even do the color."
Well, thanks to our Tina.
Tina. Tina is a member. Let me acknowledge our group. All pioneering women, please stand. Thank you. You know, I was on a bus trip to Austin, a group, we had several buses, and we were going, I can't even remember what we were fighting for, but we were going to Austin to rally and holler and had signs and everything. And so on the way, there was a lady, I wish I knew who she was today, that said, she was on vacation, she was sitting right behind me, and I said, "You're on vacation?" She said, "I always take the 19th Amendment holiday." I say, "Okay, I love history. I took history." So what is she talking about? So she told me what the 19th Amendment was, giving women the opportunity to vote. I had become a Port Commissioner and was looking for some type of foundation to start because I had that platform. So I decided to honor women who were first time in their position that normally was held by men. And who knew that we would be here today, and it has expanded and appreciated, and everybody took it on for pioneering women. I cannot thank y'all enough. This means so much to pioneering women because everybody, not just me, I might have thought about it, but all the work is in these women's hands that does so much for our students, anyone going to college, trade school, certification, masters, doctorates. We hang with them all the way. We don't just give them a one-time gift. Once we get you, we keep you till you finish. And of course, we have other programs, but I know y'all got business to do, and I just wanted to thank you so much.
Thank you so very much. I would just like to say, if you're here for the presentation, I'll allow you a few minutes to leave. And ladies, thank you for joining us today. I'll go ahead and read. At the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to the deliberation of the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property in accordance with Section 551.072 of the Government Code to which specifically land owned by the City of Beaumont at 701-555-MAINSTREET, Jefferson County, Texas. Also to consider matters related to contemplating or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code, Tar Frazier versus the City of Beaumont, Cause Number E-206919. In addition to that... Okay, everyone is gone now. Now it's the time for public comment. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name. When she call your name and you approach the podium, your three minutes will begin. The green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes, and the red light will be your signal that your three minutes are up.
James Eller, 3587 East Lucas Drive, he wants to speak on Item B on the Consent Agenda and Item Number 10 on the Agenda.
Thank you. B and G.
Item B on the consent and Item Number 10 on the agenda.
Thank you.
Item, or consent agenda, speaking about Tahir Qureshi, to find out why he's being removed off of the, or term hadn't expired yet. I talked to Mr. Qureshi, and he had no plans on being removed off of that planning and zoning. I think that it's more of a push because of Taylor Neal being ran against as of for War I, so I just was curious if that's the reason why. That's all I wanted to know about that. As of the, the other was about my red tag home, red tag home. I was already brought up to the city about taking care of my property, and I thought that everybody was in coordination with each other. I didn't realize I had to talk to different departments because environmental was talking to code enforcement, and I thought code enforcement being, it's on the upstairs level, right across the way from demolition. I don't know why everybody's talking together. Now I'm here to face my home being on that 39 structure issue. However, I've been working on it. I've been here to counsel, so I'm not sure why I'm even on that list because I've been working on the property. I've been getting things together. I have been talking to Ms. Delancy in the beginning. I then was dealing with code enforcement, and then I was dealing with environmental. So I thought that we were all on the same team to work and get it taken care of. Obviously not. It looks like I needed to make phone calls independently because the government is not talking to each other, and they're directly across from each other, and the office is right above us. I'm not sure why I'm here. I'm trying to figure out why am I being brought to council, and it seems more to retaliation, basically, because I called the council out and I called the local government out on all the things that they do wrong, and it's been pushed forward that I'm being attacked and basically escalated the whole timeline when I pointed out that the Hinchy House is in way worse condition than my home is, when I have three flat roofs that can be removed, and then I'm done. I can put seals on the side of the house, and then that's it. I'm done with the fixing it. I will now be asking for the time of 150 days, but that still won't be enough because I do not have the resources immediately. The Hinchy House, however, they have had their permits done since 2016. They have not dried in, which that is step one. Leveling is step two. Last step on it is running electrical, and they ran electrical first, and the council or the code enforcement or the building permits allowed all of their skipping one through five to go immediately to six. However, I'm not going to be given the same timeline. How is, how is the fairness and the compassion of the city being drawn out and being given the sum, and they're not equally divided up amongst everyone? That is, that is inconsiderate of this council. It is inconsiderate of this administration. Your departments are running wild. They're being able to do what they want to do.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. We appreciate you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call for a motion for the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Councilmember?
Turner.
You guys remember Turner?
Steph, can someone speak to Item D? Can Steph explain to the community kind of like how, how does this work? I had someone call and ask, and I told him I'll make sure it's actually explained from staff perspective to make sure I can get an accurate answer for him.
How does it work in terms of the adaptive signaling or the grant?
Yeah, the adaptive signaling and the grant, just like an overall condensed, you know, explanation.
Back, back in 2020, council authorized the city manager to apply with Text dot for advanced funding for a number of projects to incorporate adaptive signaling. What this is doing is coming back and asking to give authority to the city manager to actually sign the funding agreement. So funding is now available. We've reached that point in the process, and we were fortunate enough that Text dot has increased the amount of funding available to us, so we were able to add Lucas back in. Originally, we had pared it down to Calder and Washington because of the funding, and so we added Lucas in. What adaptive signaling does is for the length of the defined corridor, it puts those intersections in communication with one another and uses additional cameras to look further out from the stop bar to estimate what traffic is coming, and then the signals can adjust their timing up to about 30% and allow for better traffic flow through that defined corridor.
Yeah, that's what I kind of explained to him. I wanted to make sure it assisted with the traffic flow. That's what I wanted to explain.
Yes, sir. And when we did the first one on college, we did a before and after study on it, and in that case, we were able to get a 37% more efficient traffic flow down col, down college from Dowland Drive to Hospital Drive after we put it in.
Thank you. Is there any other discussions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. May I have the reading of Item Number One, Mrs. City Manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ask for patience with my voice today. Council, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the earnest money contract and all related documents for the sale of, of a .8439 acre city-owned property located at 125 Magnolia. Back in January, council passed a resolution authorizing city manager to negotiate this, the sale or lease of this property. We received an offer from Town and Special Limited for $300,000. Staff has reviewed that and looked at it with the, with the caveat of considering the best interest of the city for retaining the parking lot. So I'll defer to Mr. Boone, Bart, I'm sorry, if he has any more information he'd like to share with you.
Thank you.
We, we talked back and forth on this one, and we feel that keeping the parking lot is in the best interest with proximity to Lakeside Center, and the buyer has agreed. And so our recommendation is to accept the, the lower offer for just the warehouse itself.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of Item Number One. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second on the floor. Councilmember Getz.
Am I to understand that we're selling that warehouse for $175,000 now because we're keeping the parking lot? Is that what we're doing?
That is correct. $175,000 for the warehouse alone without the parking lot.
I'm very conflicted on this, and it's not because of anything wrong with the Giglio family and what they do. They're great corporate citizens, and they're great people. What bothers me and what concerns me is that that warehouse is right there in the heart of the Lake District where we are trying to and have succeeded in accomplishing a great deal of improvements. Another warehouse in that vicinity is important, I understand, to the Giglio family because it's contiguous to their beer distributorship. I do think that it is probably, though, something that could be used for a higher purpose for our citizenry as a whole. The, there's nothing wrong with this deal on paper. It's, we're getting more money than the property is valued. The property needs a lot of repairs. I had hoped, though, that some entrepreneur, somebody with some vision, could come forward with some good ideas of how that warehouse could be repurposed into something very cool for the city, something similar to what you have seen happen at the Farmer Pearl Brewery in San Antonio, something that could perhaps accommodate a farmer's market, which would be enclosed, similar to what you see at the public market in Seattle, maybe a pizza place, something, something neat. That would have been, in my view, a better thing to do downtown. However, it's been on the market for a long time. We had one group come through with some very revolutionary ideas, but they didn't have funding to accomplish them. That was going to be an ongoing process. So again, I'm conflicted. I'm going to vote to support this, but I think, but it is with regret. It's with regret that we couldn't figure out a way to do something better with that warehouse.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say publicly, thank you to the Giglio family for continuing to invest in Beaumont. You know, this company's been here for several generations now, and I just appreciate them continuing to, to build back into Beaumont.
Thank you, Councilmember Neal. As sentiments as well. Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of Item Number Two, please?
Council, consider a resolution approving a contract with Infrastructure Management Services, IMS, for payment management and asset management solutions to be used by the Public Works Department. This is for payment, maintenance, and rehabilitation of 644 miles of city streets. Key functions for planning, management, or the collection and organization of accurate data, analysis of roadway conditions, and integration of GIS information. They currently do some payment management forcing. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of Item Number Two. May I have a motion, please?
So move for approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Turner?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor. Steph, can you speak to the additional steps once this assessment takes place? Like what's next? Like kind of the steps?
We, we've done this program two times previously. Originally in 2011, they assessed all the streets of Beaumont, gave us a PCI rating of each of the streets, and then we repeated that process. In 2019, it extended a little late because of COVID, but this is continuing to get a hard assessment of the quality of the streets so that we can verify the money spent on our street rehab program is getting the effect that we want it to have in terms of continuing to improve the PCI condition across the city. In addition to that, we've added a piece to this one where we're going to inventory and mark on GIS all of the sidewalks within Beaumont so that we have an accurate inventory of where all those sidewalks exist within the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Getz.
So since we've done this twice, how has our payment condition index changed from 2011 to 2019 when we did the second one?
I didn't grab that exact number. We have improved, though. We are continuing to improve the overall PCI rating with the investment that councils approved for the street rehab program.
Thank you.
I had a follow-up. I'm sorry.
Sure, no problem. Councilmember Turner.
And I understand we're assessing the specific 644 miles, but for citizens who do see streets and things that they want to report, can you kind of speak to how can they report it in?
The, the best way is call 311 or use the 311 app and report the problems that they see, and then we'll look into it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of Item Number Three, please?
Council, consider amendment, ordinance number 22-045 to remove condition number three. In August 2022, city council approved a special use permit to allow railroad spur for properties located northeast and west side of the 600 block of Amarillo Street, the south side of 2600 block of Fanning Street subject to the following conditions. There were four conditions outlined, but the one that we want to remove is number three, which says contingent on approval by planning office being itself participating in city's rail crossing enhancement program by permitting pedestrian crossings at BNSF's rail line at rail front park. My recommendation is approval of the ordinance, of the amendment of the ordinance.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of Item Number Three. May I have a motion, please?
So move for approval. Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Neil.
Can we explain why this is on here?
So as as the manager outlined, back in August, BNSF came to the city requesting permission to cross some of its streets west of MLK. And in addition to the to the request to cross in some city streets, they also asked for a specific use permit to allow the new railroad facilities, the new spur off their main line. And as part of that process, there was consideration to to request the BNSF some access to Riverfront Park as part of that that ordinance, which was discussed. However, after further discussion with BNSF, we feel like the best the best course of action now is to not necessarily tie the crossing Riverfront Park to this spur project that they've got out west of MLK.
Councilmember Getz.
So I want to understand this in a little more detail. The way this is worded on this agenda item, we're not asking BNSF to build a crossing of their rail line at Riverfront Park. Well, that wasn't something we asked them to do, was it?
No, sir.
All we asked BNSF to do as a condition of granting this specific use permit was to allow the city to construct a pedestrian crossing over their track at Riverfront Park. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
So does that mean if we take this condition out, that we cannot create a pedestrian crossing at Riverfront Park over their rail line?
If BNSF were to approve that in the future, we could. It would be up to them.
But we have no leverage at that point. We we are completely at their mercy at that point. Is that correct?
Yes.
So what happens if we say no to this? That might be a legal question.
Yeah, maybe a legal question.
They eminent domain the property, and they just take it. And we still don't get a crossing.
BNSF has been in the news a lot lately, I believe. Or maybe that was a different railroad. But do you, I mean, there's no way to speculate whether they would actually do that or not, but.
I can say with about ninety-nine percent confidence that they would do that. They're invested in this project heavily. They need it for their expansion. I think that they would a hundred percent go for it, and I think that they would be pretty successful satisfactorily.
What do you think the chances are that they'll eventually let us put a pedestrian crossing across their rail at Riverfront Park?
So they've just we've discussed that with them, and I think that the proposed design that we had originally submitted was one that they they didn't deem to be safe, and they've since submitted some additional designs that they would like us to consider, if that's correct.
Yeah, they they definitely offered to help us to perhaps get a subterranean or over-the-track crossover. But again, that's all going to be contingent, of course, on design, funding, and then their permit.
How will they help us?
Well, hopefully for granting the permit, which, you know, whether we go under or we do a flyover, it's going to require their approval. They've also offered some potential grant opportunities for us to look at and some different concepts to look at.
Does BNS have a representative here?
Councilmember Turner.
Well, I actually did have the opportunity to meet and sit with BNSF on some of my concerns when we were in Austin for Golden Triangle Days. And one of my main concerns was just the simply how they maintain their rail. I think it's a big concern from the citizens throughout the community of Beaumont that the rails aren't maintained properly in the city of Beaumont. We want to make sure our rails look uniformed as the front lawns of, you know, our personal yard. So I did get a commitment and a contact from the head person at BNSF that if it is their rail, I also learned that it's four different companies that control rail in Beaumont, Texas, not just BNSF. So for their properties, they did commit to if if I do call, if a citizen called, they will commit to maintaining their property. So I think it's important that we identify, staff kind of get us a list of exactly which properties or rail lines is BNSF's, where we can kind of hold them accountable to, you know, what that commitment was. But also, they did mention to me, Mike, that they would assist with pointing us in the right direction with grant funding to offset the cost that we might incur from the additional crossing. So I made sure, you know, to ask those questions and make sure we can get that accountability level there. And I do have the contact, and I'll share it with you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number four, please?
Council consider request for a specific use permit to allow church in the LI Light Industrial District located at fifty-seven fifty South Martin Luther King Junior Parkway. At a joint public hearing held on February twenty-twenty-third, the planning commission recommended seven zero to approve the request for a face SUP to allow church in the Light Industrial District located at at fifty-seven fifty South Martin Luther King Junior Parkway with the following conditions. One, appropriate sign and payment markings shall be installed to update the ADA parking space to current current standards. And two, construction plans must meet all requirements by city by water utilities for any water and sewer improvements, including any requirements of the city's backflow pre-treatment or fault program. Recommendation is approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number four. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve with two conditions.
Second?
Second.
I'm sorry. Thank you. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number five, please?
Yes, ma'am. Council consider request for a specific use permit to allow contractor office with fabrication and outside storage in the GCMD District located at five forty-five Center Street with the following conditions. Construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for any water and sanitary sewer improvements, including any requirements of the city's backflow pre-treatment or fault program, as well as all applicable building and fire codes. Two, all business standard operations, I'm sorry, shall be in compliance with section twenty-eight dash zero four dash zero zero seven performance standards. Three, all building code requirements shall be adhered to due to the change in occupancy, including water and sanitary sewer services, and four, shall be in compliance with all applicable fire codes. Recommendation is approval of the ordinance.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number five. May I have a note, a motion, please?
So move for approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number six, please?
Council consider request for a specific use permit to allow a painting body shop at the GCMD District located at sixty-two fifty-five Concord Road with the following conditions. Construction plans must meet all requirements of water utilities for any water and sanitary sewer improvements, including any requirements of the city's backflow and our pre-treatment programs. Two, a net zero increase in the runoff will be required to ensure the runoff from the proposed conditions matched the existing conditions for the one-hundred-year storm event using Atlas fourteen rainfall data per district, per drainage District Six. And three, construction plans should be in compliance with section twenty-eight dash zero four dash zero zero six landscaping and screening requirements. And four, install a five-foot wide sidewalk along Concord Road, Concord Road and Judy Lane, and recommendation is approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number six with conditions. May I have a motion, please? May I have a second? There's a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number seven, please?
Council consider request to rezone a portion of property from RS to RM dash M, a more restricted district for property located at sixty-seven thirty Concord Road. And at a joint public hearing on February twenty-twenty-three, the planning commission recommended six oh to one to approve the request to rezone the property, and recommendation is approval of the ordinance.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number seven. May I have a motion, please?
So move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number eight, please?
Council consider request for a specific use permit to allow the expansion of a church in the RCR Residential Conservation Revalization District located at sixteen eighty-five Pennsylvania Street. In a joint public hearing on February twenty-twenty-third, the planning commission voted seven oh to approve with the following conditions. Construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for any water and sanitary sewer improvements, including any requirements of the city's backflow pre-treatment or fault program. And two, construction plans must meet all fine building code requirements, and recommendation is for approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number eight. May I have a motion, please?
So move for approval with the conditions.
And a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number nine, please?
Council consider request to extend the deadline to allow substance abuse treatment facility at forty-six fifty-five Collier Street as approved in June of twenty eighteen with the following conditions. Thirty-two off-street parking spaces will be required, including two ADA spaces, one being van accessible. ADA compliant access aisle and ramps must be also installed. Structure must be brought up to fire code per occupancy according to the IFC slash city ordinance. Operator must provide adequate security for this facility, and for facility would treat only male adolescents from ages twelve to seventeen, and recommendation of approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number nine. May I have a motion, please? A second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Now it's a time for our public hearing. I will now open the floor for public hearing. And Mr. Boone, or the city manager who's opening?
I can save my voice, good.
Very good.
Thank you.
So in a moment, we're going to open the public hearing for the consideration of ordering various structures on this item to be demolished. However, council will be hearing requests for possible requests for extensions of of the repair to these properties. However, before we get into the work program and the, or excuse me, the public hearing and those requests, let me just go over a few rules about the program. And these rules are available in writing, both in English and in Spanish from our staff, which will be available after the meeting. So again, if council does approve additional time through a work program, you would need to make sure that the all taxes are paid on the properties, or at least you're in a work program with the Jefferson County Tax Office. If you are approved for a work program, you do enroll in a work program within ten days of today. Make sure that you're the owner or have legal control of the property. And again, if if approved, you would have a hundred and fifty days to complete the repair to the structure. Within that is the first ninety days, which the structure would need to be dried in. So that would be complete the roof, windows, doors, exterior walls, and then an additional sixty days to complete all work to bring the structure up to code and get a certificate of occupancy for a one-hundred-and-fifty-day total. So again, these rules are available in writing after the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. Thank you, Mr. Boone. You ready, clerk? Thank you.
I have Karina, and I'm not sure how to pronounce the last name. It's sixteen twenty-five St. Augustine Avenue, Port Arthur, Texas, and she's speaking on item number two, fifteen eighty Avenue G. Can you pronounce your last name for the record, please? Thank you.
Hi. If we were wanting an extension on the property.
Item.
Item number two?
Item number two. Oh, who, pronounce it.
Huerta.
Huerta?
Huerta.
It's item number two.
Yeah, we wanted to get an extension on property on fifteen eighty Avenue G to keep working on it and finish fixing it, please.
Are you the owner?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm trying to get to.
I got a question, ma'am.
I've got one, too.
Fourteen eighty-five?
Fifteen eighty Avenue G.
Okay, we have two Avenue Gs. That's one. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and allow Councilmember Getz and then Councilmember Turner. You okay? Councilmember Getz.
Mr. Director, you were previously signed up for a work improvement program. Is that correct?
We had gone the insurance, like bonded, to work on the house.
Okay. And you signed, you came before council before, or you went before Mr. Boone and signed up for a work improvement program?
We went upstairs. I'm not sure if that's what is what you mean. But yeah, we went upstairs, got the permits, got bonded. We're working on it. It just took a little longer than we expected, and things happened, unexpected things came up. And so it took us a little longer, but right now we should be back on it. But we were waiting for the hearing since it was canceled last month.
Okay. Well, the reason I'm asking is according to the information we've been provided is that you signed up for the work program in November of twenty twenty-one. Okay? And now it's over a year later.
Right.
And nothing has been done.
Well, we had been, you know, working inside because, like I said, unexpected things were coming up, but we should be back on track by now. But we were just waiting for this hearing to be able to finish it within this last part of the permit that we're asking for.
Okay. Any other comments? So you're requesting another hundred and fifty days?
Yes, to finish it. We should be finishing it pretty soon.
Okay. Thank you.
I think Mr. Boone had a question.
One moment, Mr. Boone.
Mayor, just just to clarify, they had a pre-council administrative work program. So that's, as she mentioned, that's where you do it, you know, with the city staff. And then again, if the if the work's not completed, that's when we bring it back, bring it to council. So this will be the first time y'all are hearing it. Okay. Okay, that's different. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Marvin Douglas, forty-one ten Congress, Beaumont, Texas, speaking on item number twenty, thirteen seventy, La Baca.
Good afternoon.
Hello, sir.
And item number twenty, which is thirteen seventy, La Baca. I've been having a problem with it. I had a forty-foot container on it, and I was told about the city that that wasn't commercial land. They made me sell a container box off the land. Now they come back and tell me it's commercial. I went and got it bonded to try to get it fixed, get the work fixed. They told me with the damage that the storm did, I can move it and make it safe, but I couldn't do anything to tell it. I get it from it. Then they told me I have to get it. Then they told me, I have to get it tested for asbestos, it's just a storage building. And the money that you're telling me for to get it tested for asbestos, man, it's just a wooden structural, structure. And the part of the roof that came off, it's just a double roof that they did for cosmetics, 'cause it's not leaking inside of it, but I'm having all these problems back and forth, trying to get the money, and I don't have that kind of money just to go back and forth, because once I sit up here and pay all the money for the permits, I ain't got money for the material. And it's just the constant back and forth, back and forth. And the pool that's on there is the pool for my kids, 'cause I stay across the street. And I just put the pool there because I didn't have room in my backyard. And the city code, I talked with the lady, she told me just close the fence up, and that's what I did. But then I got the letter saying, y'all fit to tear the building down.
So what is your request?
I'm requesting to give me more time to get the roof fixed, and then somebody to tell me exactly the codes that they telling me, 'cause they telling me I gotta get electricity, gas, water. It's just a storage building, I don't need all that. The only thing I really was using was the water, and when the kids was there, I had a generator for the power. But I had power to it, but it filled up under the grandfather law. And when they made me move the container, they sit up here and said it's not commercial anymore. They even, when I sit up here and told them that it's commercial, 'cause the post office still using my mailbox, the same day the lady called the post office, made them scratch the stick off the mailbox. And I was asking why they did that, they told me I had to sit up here and spend two hundred and fifty dollars more, and then, the, her boss told me, I might as well save my money, because he gonna, it's still gotta come through him, and he gonna cancel it. So that's what I did, then my wife took sick and I just kinda backed off of it. But it, it's just been one confusion about that property, one way or another, which I can't understand, and it's just commercial, I mean, uh, storage.
So your request is...
Give me more time to finish the roof, 'cause that's the only thing I can see that's an issue.
Okay, Councilmember, uh, Samuel.
Um, is it just the roof, or, uh, okay, let me ask you this, would you be able to get it completed in a hundred and fifty days?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Felschah, then Councilmember Turner.
And Mr. Douglas, I'm, I'm assuming you're aware of the fact that the market value on this is forty-four hundred dollars, and you owe over two thousand dollars in back taxes.
Well, like I said, my wife passed, and she was there, and I'm a single father, and I got five girls, and it just, I just got behind.
You understand, we're sorry for your loss, but you're, do you feel like you're in a position to be able to pay the taxes owed on it?
Oh, yes, I'm working on that now, 'cause I got another property that I'm trying to sell, and once I sell it, it's gonna cover all my properties.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner.
Uh, to staff, what might be a little bit more concerning to me is, the gentleman, the way he explained it, it seems like it may be some form of not clear communication of exactly what he's looking to get done, or what we're looking to get accomplished. Uh, are we putting these requests in black and white, or is it just a blatant conversation we're having, so we can kinda not deal with the confusion?
Yes, so whenever we, whenever we cite somebody for a dangerous structure, we actually identify every, every subsection of the International Property Maintenance Code that's in violation, so that would include the rotting members, the, the, the roof issues, I mean, y'all can see from the photographs of the issues, and so, he, I think the gentleman has entered into a work program back in the December of twenty twenty-one, so part of that work program that they sign has the instructions as to, uh, essentially what your timeline is, uh, and how to move forward. I think he mentioned it is commercial, so with it being commercial because of state law, you've got asbestos questions that have to be addressed, so, i- in short, uh, all of our documentation is in writing.
And just to follow up, uh, sir, do you, do you have a copy of that?
Uh, I got a copy when I registered my bond, but, uh, it was, like I said, it's code, code such and such, such and such, but you don't explain the code, so.
Yeah.
How am I, and really what I'm going off of, the gentleman that put the sign, I just happened to be out there and I went and talked with him. And I'm relaying what I'm saying, is what he told me. He said I can move the stuff that's hanging, that the storm tore up, but I couldn't do any more work. Then the lady from the city code said, well, look, Mr. Douglas, could you just put the fence back up? And I put the fence back up, I moved the stuff off of there, and once I put the fence up, I thought it was okay.
Yes, sir.
And really and truly, I went to go pay a fine, previous fine. And then that's when I found out I had warrants for my arrest for this same fence. But I talked with the judge and he understood, and he said, well, what I needed to do was call the agent that cited the deal, to let her know, 'cause she didn't know. And that's why they had the warrant, because I was supposed to go to court, but I didn't receive it.
Yeah, yes, sir. Mr. Williams, my request is just, with this gentleman, can a staff member get with him and explain the codes and make sure he understands it if possible? Can we get it documented in black and white, because he stating someone said this and someone said that, I think we eliminate all of that if we just get it straightforward in black and white, so it could be a clear understanding.
Sure, that's something we could do, and I'm, I'm sure there's probably some documentation that exists with communication or interactions already. We'll provide that if that exists.
Pardon me, but when I, when I talked with the judge today, and that's what I think what the problem was, the letter that they sent me for the court date, and the fact that I didn't call the agent that sit up here and wrote it up, but I talked with her, and I just gotta clear it up with her and let her come and see that I actually did that, and if it's all right with y'all, then I'll just say, hey, y'all just let me know what else I gotta do. 'Cause this weekend, it's not that much work left on the roof as it is. The pieces that's on the side, they had to be hive down, so, at the time, I couldn't even mess with that till it went away.
So has any staff talked with you directly before?
Well, once I go to court, and then after court, I met her about the house, and then that's when I talked with her. That's been about, I'd say, three weeks ago.
So they discussed it with you in person?
To put that fence up.
We'll talk to you again.
Yeah, about this pool.
Someone will get, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Samuel.
Yes, Mr. Douglas, um, once you talk with staff today?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, excuse me.
If, in the event, well, if this body allows to, uh, for it, for you to do another opportunity to get the work done, that means it'll be a hundred and fifty days you be allowed.
Okay.
Now, here's, here's the thing that I, that concerns me about this anytime. If you don't make significant progress with that project in that one hundred and fifty days, they could come back and it will be torn down, no matter what you've put into the building, because they're not gonna ask that you bring it up to just look good. They're gonna ask that it be brought up to code. And I would hate to see, you have to make that decision whether you wanna put the money into the project. That's gonna be your decision, but understand that once you begin to put the money into the project, if you don't complete it, if anything happens, you lose it.
I understand.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, James Callis, uh, fifty-three seventy-five Rosemary Drive, Beaumont, Texas, item number twenty-two, twenty-four eighty-five Magnolia.
Hello to everyone, I was here several weeks ago, I'd like to compliment everybody, seemed like the council was working very hard to try to make it work out for all our citizens. I'm here today for twenty-four eighty-five Magnolia, which I call Aunt Amelia's House. It is not a house for profit, it's a house for charity, and I'm gonna read a letter from a homeless woman. My name is Luanne, we, we call her Missy. After losing my husband to cancer, I was raped and became HIV positive from that rape. My friend, which is me, is trying to get his property repaired and ready so that many others like myself can get off the streets and won't be subjected to rapes, murders, and so on and so forth, by getting off the street and getting their lives back in order, and become productive citizens of our community. I've told you, this house has been in my family since nineteen thirty-four. It is certainly not a dangerous structure, I drove by it before I came up here today, it does need mowing, I'll get it mowed this weekend. Um, I have to sort of diverge, I, I did retire from the trades February twenty-eighth, and I did complete a, uh, red tag house, forty-one, forty-six fifteen Magnolia. I'll tell you that only thirty-six out of over four hundred houses were completed last year, and this January, uh, I was in the four that have been completed so far, I've not brought it up to date, so. I'm asking for the additional hundred and fifty days, I'll let you know that daylight savings will be this Sunday, and that gives me more time, and uh, I know that Delancy has been very cooperative, trying to give me the extra time, so. But I pretty much do my own work, I do have a couple Hispanic guys lined up to try to increase the man-hours, but uh, Magnolia is an important house to me, and I would like for it to be repaired, and, and it can house three homeless women, and that's my goal. Um, not a whole lot more than that, I do ask that time.
Mr. Callis, I show that you have nineteen hundred and thirty-three dollars owed for back... Nineteen thirty-three?
Yeah, not a problem.
Okay, so you will take care of back taxes?
Not a problem.
Okay. And so you're just requesting a hundred and fifty days? You're requesting an additional...
Hundred and fifty days, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Samuel.
Yes, um, not that this needs to be said, but I will say it anyway. Uh, you do understand that we don't, it's, it's not a matter of whose house it is. Uh, if it doesn't meet the code, there's a chance that it will be torn down. And many times, I've seen it when we've given opportunities for the repairs to be done, people put their money into it, and something happens and they fail to complete it. I've also seen where someone has been injured by, by fires that starts. I understand trying to help the homeless, we want to do that, but we, even those that are homeless, they deserve to have a home that is safe. And if, if, on my watch, if something happens and we knowingly allow something to go on that's not safe, then that's on my conscience, our conscience, and would be on yours also. So I'm not saying this just for you, but, uh, many times people ask, why are we tearing these structures down? Sometimes they look like they're okay, but we must follow the code, and we have to look out the safety and well-being for all our citizens. Those who knowingly go in, and those that you know knowingly go into properties, and also those who don't, have permission to go in, uh, we have to protect them also.
Thank you. Councilmember Getz?
Yes, sir, I would, I would like to answer that, I am a qualified contractor, I'm a responsible master plumbing, I hold electrical license and HVAC license, and I'm a licensed real estate broker. I am more than qualified to save twenty-four eighty-five Magnolia. I told the council just why I've saved forty-six fifteen Magnolia, it's not easy, the city makes you go back to, as if it's a brand-new construction. Now, I understand that, I actually have several active permits, I just moved the scout hut off of the Idoree Park onto private property, I just pulled the permit for that, I just made application for the, for the, for the water meter, and that project's gonna be completed. Now, my main deal is, I have multiple issues with the city, and I would like to not have that, so I retired from my trade, I'm physically able to keep going. I'm seventy-four, I had planned to do it at seventy-five, I was following the Catholic deal, they like their clergy to retire at seventy-five. I can't wait any longer, I need to get this done, and so I do appreciate your words, I understand the investment, there's way more than money there. People are constantly asking me to purchase twenty-four eighty-five Magnolia, it's not for sale. So if the city does tear it down, it will be an unused property, thirty-seven and a half feet, the city requires fifty feet minimum width, occasionally you can get a forty-foot approved. Now, I have other lots in town, and I plan to build other small houses, so we can house some of our citizens in affordable housing. Now, excuse me for getting emotional, but I think my request is valid, I know that I can do it, and I hope that I've granted additional time.
Mr. Callis, as I preference my statement, that was not directly and intentionally for you.
Yes, sir. Okay, I, I apologize if, if, uh, my words were anything other than information.
I understand.
Hold on, Mr. Callis.
Mr. Callis, question. The house, does it currently have electricity?
No, it, I, I, when, when I was first notified, I got it into what was called an orange tag, and it was just sitting there, uh, it's secure. I put the roof on myself, it's eighty-five percent architectural shingles. I, I think I told y'all last time, my friends are older, I, I'm older, I guess, but I don't think about it as that. I, I still physically work, I enjoy, I don't consider it work, it's what I do, so, uh, but a new code enforcer came by, put the red tag back, and, and the water meter was pulled and the electric was done. I can say this, I had already redone the plumbing, that sounds kinda strange, I redid the plumbing, and I, uh, uh, the electrical is in good shape, but based on completing a red-tagged house, the, uh, the requirements for red tag are not equal with building codes. See, I, I just have a, the permits, these permits are good for a year, but, but not red-tagged, that, it's a whole different program.
So here's, here's the reason I'm asking, because we have a note in our packet that says the electrical, mechanical, and plumbing will need to be replaced, and even if you're doing this yourself, you know, those can be expensive systems.
It's, yes, sir, I, I understand, but I, I've just completed one.
So that's, well, let me ask Mr. Boone, what are the qualifications and stipulations for our replace? Why would he have to replace electrical, he said the electrical's up to, up to snuff?
Well, I would have to defer to staff who've actually put their eyes on it, but I'm sure there, there are issues with the code, property maintenance code. Any additional information, Delancy?
So on a red-tagged structure, we require that the electrical, mechanical, plumbing, everything meets the current codes. So there has not been any upgrade to the electrical in this house that we have permits for, so there are some things that need to be brought up to code. So all he has to do is bring in an electrician, the electrician can let him know what doesn't meet code, bring it up to code, it may just be some receptacles that have to meet the code.
Okay, so on a house this age, it's very likely, I guess, that it would be knob and, uh, whatever.
Not necessarily.
Knob and tube? Um, we don't know if that's the case here, though? I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Yeah, not right off the top of my head, I would have to actually go pull all the pictures.
So if it were, I'm playing devil's advocate a little bit here, 'cause I'm trying to educate myself, if it were knob and tube, that's certainly not current code.
Correct.
Would he be required, because it was red-tagged, even if the knob and tube worked fine, to go back and put conduit and everything?
Correct, it has to be brought up to the current codes that we're on.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I think he said he's the electrician, can he?
He's the plumber, and he has an HVAC license.
He has what?
HVAC, air conditioning.
Because I was gonna ask if he could do his own work.
He can do his own plumbing work, he's also a bonded contractor, so he can do his own contract work.
Okay, thank you.
So, Chris, a question for you. Um, if a house is red-tagged for rotten wood, you, you know, maybe a hole in the roof, something like that, but the electrical and everything is okay, does it seem to be a little harsh to require them to bring the electrical all the way up to current standards, if that's not really the reason for the red tag?
If the electrical's okay, we don't necessarily require a complete upgrade.
Okay, that's not what my previous understanding was from Delancy.
Delancy, do you have the file? 'Cause, let me clarify one thing, too, 'cause I know there was some discussion prior as to, you know, the communication issue, when we, when we cite these homes, it's not in your packet, but when we cite these structures, every issue is identified. In other words, it's a checkbox in the system, so every, every issue is checked if it's an issue, and that's tied to the property maintenance code section, so that individual can go to the section. Now, what we can't necessarily do is have an inspector out on the site with a contract... Now, what we can't necessarily do is have an inspector out on the site with a contractor showing them how to make the repairs. We can't do that, but there seemed to be some discussion along that line earlier. But Delancey, have any additional information?
Yeah, on the electrical and plumbing, usually there are minor things that have to be replaced in there. If they're missing electrical or receptacle covers, if their weatherhead is pulled down, their service may be a hundred amp service, needs to be a two-hundred-amp service. So it may just be small things like that. That's why we just require the electrician to go in and look. If the electrician says everything's fine, all they have to do is give me a letter on weatherhead signed by the master stating it meets code.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you.
Oh, that's all I have, Mayor.
That's it?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, now we have a big packet. Okay, so we have number two.
Mr. Eller, did Mr. Eller want to speak again? He did?
He gets to speak during the public hearing as well if he wants to.
James Eller, thirty-five eighty-seven East Lucas Drive, Bama, Texas.
What number?
What number is he?
Number ten.
Number ten. Sorry.
So what I brought up before, like I said, I was already working with the city to do corrections with the code enforcement, with environmental. So I didn't realize that I needed to place individual calls to the different departments when I knew when code enforcement, or I called environmental, then environmental said, did code enforcement come out? Because they work together. I figured that demo, everybody else was in the same packet, basically, to get me all on the same thing. I'm also not even two years into, which I thought it was two years into the work program. I'm not completely out of two years, which it was four-nineteen twenty-twenty-one is whenever I signed on for it. I'm not sure, like I said, why certain houses are held to a different standard than others, because like I brought up to Mr. Delancey, was that the Hinchey House is not even dried in, and that's supposed to be ninety days, and it's five years or longer now because they signed up their permit in two thousand and sixteen. They still have windows missing. They skipped down to number six, which is electrical on the packet, right? The contract you sign, it, last thing is number six. For total compliance, you must complete interior work, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, et cetera. This is to be done after the dry-in stage. However, they skipped to that. So how is it that some houses, if you have basically respect in the community as of who you are or whatever, how are you skipping or being able to be skipped by building codes? Because as Mr. Sanger said, just to reinstate, or you could say it better, as of we cannot on your watch be, you know, allow anybody to get hurt. Well, the Hinchey House has full access where you can actually climb in there. It's not structurally sound. The windows are still busted out, and it's been like that since two thousand and sixteen.
Mr. Eller.
But this is example, so I'm comparing it to that everybody is not held fair.
But it's.
We have to hold everybody to the same standards, or we can't hold anybody to the standards, correct? We cannot play favoritism with some and then allow others to do what they must.
You're correct, but we're not talking about the Hinchey House.
We technically are.
So, no, we're not. We're talking about your property.
Technically talking about dangerous conditions.
Okay.
So if we're claiming that mine is a dangerous condition, and I'm asking you, then how are some structures allowed to be dangerous and it's okay? Because obviously, since two thousand and sixteen, the Hinchey House has not been worked on. And I've been out there, and I actually volunteered, did work out there. I met with Mr. Gitts out there. I brought Home Depot in there to get resources to the house, and they have donators, they have volunteers, they have manpower. We're dealing with some homeowners like myself, that's just me, or like this gentleman back here, that it's just him, that it's either we're the only hands that we can count on, and we have a home like this that's completely in room. You have parts of the house that is falling off. I know I have to take off the three rooms in the back of my house, which is flat roofs. Flat roofs suck. They leak, you constantly have to deal with them. That's my birth home. I've dealt with that all growing up, my mom, my dad, whoever was in the house, had to always fix the roof. So that is a constant. I want to remove them completely. I wish I was able to do it a long time ago. I had siblings that took twelve thousand from me, twelve thousand dollars from me. I had also seven customers that took thirteen thousand dollars or didn't pay me. I would have been done with all this. I wanted to protect my birth home, and yet I'm not afforded the same timeline because, like I say, I'm in a two-year work program, I thought, and short of that four-nineteen twenty-twenty-two, or twenty-twenty-three, I'm being sent more letters, constant letters. I'm being now brought into here as an addition as one of the thirty-nine. Why? If I'm working with the code enforcement, working with environmental, I'm actually in the process of doing stuff. Because it's not on your timeline? Because it's not that I called you enough times that I didn't check in, boss?
Okay, Mr. Eller, I've let you talk. I have not interrupted you.
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate it.
So now I'm going to give you what I have on this paper. So the description of your property says that the property has been declared a public nuisance. The owner signed up for a work program on April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, and was granted one hundred and fifty days plus a ninety-day extension. No work has been done to the structure. There is rotten wood all over the exterior that must be replaced. The foundation must be leveled in multiple, in multiple places. There is water damage to the interior on the add-on because of being exposed to the elements. The addition will have to be demolished or completely rebuilt. Based on the extensive repairs needed in this structure, staff is recommending a raise order for this structure. The reinspection was completed on October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. So I understand, Mr. Eller, you probably don't want to be here, and because of all of the mishaps that you've had happen to you, your family, other contractors, money being stolen from you, it has probably put a kink in your finances, plus you work, I'm sure, a regular job, so you're trying to fit all of this in and get it done. So in all fairness, you've been given one hundred and fifty days plus an additional ninety days, and still no work has been done. And so we're not here to discuss the Hinchey House. One moment, please. And the Hinchey House has a state marker, it's a state marker home, has federal funding and remodeling that's been done to it by the VFW veterans, and it's being worked on right now. You brought up the Hinchey House. We're not here for the Hinchey House, but you want to compare that to the Hinchey House. Your house is not being worked on under federal funds, and it's not being worked on by the VFW veterans. And so I don't even want to discuss the Hinchey House, and I'm sure you're using that so that in a comparison, you said, but we're not comparing your one hundred and fifty days and your ninety days to the federal-funded Hinchey House with a historical marker on it, okay?
Safe structure.
Okay, safe structure, and I understand that. I haven't seen the Hinchey House. I've never been by it, don't know the work that's being done, but under some federal guidelines and funding, I'm sure there's probably some additional structure guidelines that's going to be different from your regular residential, your house and my house. Okay, well, you're going to always say no.
It's building. It's the International Builders Code that they all have to apply to, regardless, federal or not, whoever funds it, it doesn't matter. It depends on.
Well, let me finish, Mr. Eller. I didn't interrupt you. I let you say whatever you needed to say. So according to this paperwork, you've been given the one fifty plus additional ninety. Still no work has been done. That was in twenty-twenty-one. The last inspection was done in twenty-twenty-two, October twenty-eighth. We're now in twenty-twenty-three.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you, Jesus, I'm here. But the reason why you're here, because you haven't complied.
I have. I've been working with building code and environmental.
You have been calling and you've been conversating, but you.
I've actually been working. That's why, if you check, if you put everything, and if you open the entire file, you have the progress report, you have the progress pictures.
Okay, one moment, Mr. Eller. So I'm going to ask you, can you please come up and tell us where his file is, where the work is? Because this is saying no work has been done.
So on the structure itself, nothing has been done. He did sign up for the work program. He did come in at the one hundred and fifty days to let me know that he needed an extension, that he was working, trying to get code enforcement stuff taken care of. And so he told me his truck was broke down, and he had brought some jacks to jack the house up. After that ninety day, after that time that he came and talked to me and asked me for an extension, I never heard from him until we came to council on January the twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-three.
Mayor, okay.
And I did speak with him yesterday when he came in and told him had he called and asked for an extension, I would have been more than willing to grant.
Pictures were taken in May, so.
I have a question.
Councilmember Gitts.
Unlike every other property, it says this house has been declared a public nuisance. Mr. Boone, does that have any significance? Did we go through a whole additional procedure on this?
Yes, so y'all may recall, within the last few months, we brought a few properties before council under the public news, the public health statutes and public nuisance issues. So this was one of those that was brought forward.
So how does that factor in when a house is declared a public nuisance when people are coming up here for a work program?
From the purpose of procedure for today, it's, I don't want to say it's not relevant because ultimately, it's a public safety, public health issue. So there is some overlap, but in terms of today's procedure, it's just additional information.
Okay.
Councilman Gitts, our background, during that meeting, y'all did agree to allow him some time to bring his property into compliance, and he is working with the Health Department to get that taken care of. That was the conclusion of the public nuisance hearing.
And that hearing occurred when?
Well, we gave him ten days.
In January. No, I think it was, I think it was more than ten days, just to be fair. I believe that he was, there was a conversation between him and, that he would reach out and they would do status updates, as long as he made improvements within that ten days, that they would continue to work with him. That was my understanding of the outcome.
It was ten days, and then Randy Felschall, Councilman Felschall, said, Mr. Eller, to be fair, how long would you actually need to get up to code, to fully done? And I said thirty to forty-five days is what, and then you stated, Ms. Mayor, you said, so now you're asking for more time? I said, no, I'm just answering his question. Whenever you said ten days, I said, no, I can't do that, but in ten days, because you asked how long with, was it that gentleman, too, that they came here for the cleanup thing? So you said, name your time on how long? And I said, ten days for reinspection, so I didn't say completely done.
Exactly.
Right? So then you had asked how long, to be completely fair, how long? And I said thirty to forty-five days. And then whenever I called and I talked to the city manager, and I talked to the head of the environmental code, I stated that I was dealing with RSV. I almost lost my lung coughing, I mean, literally coughing, and you said that there would be no compassion, or the city has offered enough compassion, is what he said, as I'm coughing my lungs out on the phone. Now, also, the environmental code supervisor stated the same thing. Well, I'm not going to give you more than, you know, ten days, because how long would this be going on?
Let me ask a question, excuse me. So after he was given those ten days, was there another reinspection? Did they go back out to re-inspect the status?
So I only do the structure demolition, so that's where the confusion is coming in. Lynn Foot and Health Department do code enforcement, so I do not know.
So there's no record of an inspection?
I don't handle that.
There was just inspection, I think, a week ago.
Yeah, let me, I can pull on my phone.
One moment, Ms. Councilmember Felschall.
Mr. Eller, these pictures that we have were taken May the twenty-second, okay? Yeah, just, they were taken last year, May of.
Well, you can see here the date.
I guess my question is, from May until January, I think when you came back, was there any work done? Anything done?
Not on the structure, because I was getting the other stuff handled, because I figured that the nuisance part applied to, first, whenever I came in for that meeting, I thought that it was the overall.
Okay.
That's why I'd also told you, I said, well, all I got to do, or at the meeting, at some meeting, or over there or somewhere, I said, all I got to do is remove those three rooms off the back, and then I should be done. But that day, that meeting was for the cleanup instead of the house.
So you're saying the nuisance part has been dealt with?
Yeah.
But the structure has not been addressed?
No, because I needed to address the nuisance issue because I had the timeline on that, so I had to put full focus on getting that done as a timeline. So I got that stuff knocked out to an extent of maybe thirty-five percent still there. Like I said, I was down for three weeks with RSV.
Okay, but you think, and you're saying you could fix this?
Yes, I can knock off the back of the house. I'm not trying to fix the back of the house. I'm trying to cut it off, and then that's it. That's not a problem. It would leave me a door over here to a bedroom that needs to be walled up and siding all the way across, and then after that, a doorway over here to this end, and that's it. That would make the home square, and that's all. The back rooms is not a concern to keep. That's, I'm not trying to spend thousands of dollars to save three back rooms that are flat roofs, no.
Councilmember Gitts.
Chris, do we agree that the nuisance portion of this has been abated?
We can get you a report on that, but again, those, while they're overlapping issues about public health and safety, they're two distinct processes.
The issues with public health deal with whether or not council wants to take action to have the, go through the civil process to get rights to clean the property ourselves. Obviously, if council decided today not to give additional time to allow the property to be restored, and you want us to demolish it, we wouldn't spend that effort to then go through the civil process to clean up the property ourselves. And so although they run, you know, they do affect one another, they are parallel. If the property is in a state where he can, you know, get the property up to code, the house up to code, then it stands to reason that we should also allow him a chance to clean the property before we do civil actions.
I get that. I guess my concern is, he said in January at the nuisance hearing that he needed forty-five days to clean it up. We've, that's been more than forty-five days, or we, hasn't been cleaned up.
So I can tell you that my office has not received anything from the Health Department to move forward with civil action, so we can assume that either he's making progress on cleaning up the property, or they're still working with him on that. Typically, after council gives the issues, notice that they can move forward with civil action, anyone who has not complied or made substantial efforts to clean their property, we would get notice to proceed with a civil litigation, and we've not got that.
And the Health, just for the record, the Health Director is on his way, if you guys have any questions for him. Director Coleman.
Well, just so you know, we, Mayor, we did hear from the Health Department, there's been some improvements in the rear, but it's not in complete compliance yet.
I have a covered area, not the carport area where it looked like there was junk there. That was also elevated off the ground. That building material is now stacked and stored on same things. I took it all off, and then I restacked it nice and neat, overlapped like cross-lapped. Any other building material, I took to the other house, and I actually built some things that I needed, stands, and also basically walled up for a storage thing, basically.
It's typically the recommendation of our office, if the property owner is making continuous compliance or making continuous strides to clean the property, that we not invest the money to clean it or seek civil litigation, so.
Thank you.
What I was going to say is, the last, the other outdoor, basically, it's not even a carport, it was where I actually had a workout bench, so I have a tin cupboard. Well, I used that to put some stuff under there so it wouldn't get wet. That right there is my next focus, that has stuff under it, but beyond that, that's pretty much it. The primary is just that. There's a couple little things, and there are bags that I had before that had cans in them. The bags had ripped, and then that, I have a couple of cleanup things, but beyond that, that's the main, that's the main thing. So it's roughly about twenty-five to thirty-five percent that still needs to be done, but that's primarily underneath that covered area.
Mr. Eller, our focus is not to take people's property. Our focus is not to have you come up here for us to give you a hard time. The main objective is for you to be in compliance.
One hundred percent.
This has been going on for two years, and then you've given me, from your family stealing, a contractor stealing, you had RSV, and I'm not saying that any of it isn't true. It happens. Life happens every day. I have a daughter. Life happens every day. I have a daughter in surgery right now, but I'm here, right now as we speak. So we all have life problems.
Yes, we do.
But every time you come up here, it's always an excuse, an extension, and I have this problem, that problem. We all have problems.
So no compassion, because like.
No, it's not that it's not compassion. It's a lot of compassion.
I had RSV, but I was still working. I was still trying to maintain it and getting it taken care of.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that you didn't have RSV. A lot of people have, a lot of people have a lot of problems. But in two years, you have not done anything. And you keep saying, I need to, because of a flat roof? Yes, I understand if you have a flat roof, water's just gonna sit. And you need to tear it down. So then, when are you gonna tear it down? When are you gonna move forward? When are you gonna make the progress? We've given you compassion, as you say. We've given you an extension. We've given you 150 days. We've given you additional 90 days. Then I ask you, how, how much time did you need? And you said, give me 10 days and I'll make some progress. And so now the Health Director is here on his way to give a report. And so we're going back and forth, and then you're trying to put it on us. We don't want your property. We don't want to give you a hard time. We just want you to be in compliance so that other people that live around you don't have to live in your mess.
Actually, it was my brother that reported me, just to get back at me as he stole $12,000 from me. So y'all are, y'all are.
Again, it doesn't matter who, who reported you. It, it's there. It's there.
It is. But like I said, I've been steadily working on it. So whenever he gets here, hopefully he'll have the updated pictures to show you. I have no problem with that. I have it on my other phone over there. I can show you the updated pictures. I have quote from the actual individual that inspected last time, because Justin couldn't make it because he got bit by a dog.
Oh, God, see, there's another excuse. Now somebody got bit by a dog.
I say Justin Jackson, you're in, you're in, your, your city employee got bit by a dog, so he couldn't make it to the 11 o'clock appointment. I was there though, so then the other, the code enforcement person came and she said you made, you know, drastic changes. You've made considerable improvement.
Well, you had two years to do it. I hope so.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Well, we're waiting for the Health Director now to come, are we?
No, no.
It's totally different?
It's, it's separate, but I, I can tell you that that is true, that we did have an employee who was unable to, to make a scheduled appointment due to an incident. So, but, but the two, the two issues aren't related.
So it's two separate issues?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay.
Mayor, just a point of clarification. I did get a call from Mr. Eller. He was saying that he had, he had not been able to comply with the, what we had put out there, and he was sick at the time. He was having a disagreement with our city employees. But that was about it. There was no other conversation. He just had not complied, and he was upset with city employees.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Eller.
That's all that I have.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we have items number two, number 10, number 20, and number 22, correct?
That's what I have.
Mr. Coleman is here. Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Are you gonna close the public hearing, Mayor?
No, I won't.
Is it still open?
Public hearing is still open. Well, Mr. Coleman, let us take this vote, because what you're gonna speak in reference to is totally different from, from the vote we're gonna take. If you give us.
So technically, no, because it's not a posted item. And so if you want clarifications on statements that were made regarding the public hearing on item number 10, then Mr. Coleman, Director Coleman can speak on them, but he cannot speak after the public hearing is closed.
Okay, Mr. Coleman, if you'll come forward. Thank you. And we're speaking on item number 10 at owner James Eller at 2332 Avalon Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Yes, ma'am. We, the inspector went out twice from the time you guys first declared it a public health nuisance. It was still out of compliance. We offered Mr. Eller to move some of his, some of the litter to the road, and Benji would go by and pick it up. He refused that. I spoke to Mr. Eller personally. He shared with me he had been sick. And I said, okay, let's work out a plan to give me a timeline on how much more time you would need. He said he would need 45 additional days. I didn't agree with that. And as trying to work through a plan, then he became irate over the phone, start using profanity, and then that's when I ended the phone call.
And that's all the information you have on that?
Yes.
Thank you so very much.
When, when was your conversation where he said he needed 45 additional days? How long?
I don't have the exact date.
Approximate?
Maybe about a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. And how many days did you think would be appropriate?
Well, the fact that we had given him 10 additional days, or you guys had granted him 10 additional days, and so we looking at a week after that, said he was sick, I'm thinking maybe another week to make significant progress. And he just refused that.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel.
Yes, there is a difference between a, a public nuisance property and a property that is out of code. Is that correct, or is that one in the same?
That's probably end up being one in the same, because it becomes a public health nuisance when it's out of code and then it poses a public health hazard. Then that's when it's declared a public health nuisance.
Councilmember Gates.
Well, I think that what Councilman Samuel may be getting at is, you can have a house that's perfectly up to code, but if you allow the conditions around the exterior of your house to deteriorate so that you have tall weeds, litter, junk, and everything, it can become a public health nuisance so that, you know, so they can be different in, in that regard, I guess. Is that fair?
Well, it will become a public health nuisance if you got tall weeds, a lot of litter, buckets that's holding water,
Yeah.
junk motor vehicles and all that.
Yeah.
So let me make a clarification also, Mr. Coleman. When you said that Benji, who is over the landfill, would go out to the residence to pick up the trash, I think it was identified that he doesn't even have water.
But they was willing to make those accommodations to assist him.
So, and, and that's why I'm saying that they would still go out to pick up the additional trash for him, even though he did not even pay for trash.
At that residence.
And has no water bill at that residence. I know he stated prior that he would take it and put it at his neighbor, so the neighbors would do it, but we even offered him to pick it up.
So we tried to make all the accommodations we can to help him. And I shared with him that you give me a plan to make significant progress. Not that it has to be completely in compliance, but make enough progress and we'll continue to work with you. And then he refused that offer as well.
And you haven't seen that. You haven't seen that progress, correct? Okay, thank you. We appreciate you coming down. No, sir. Okay, we are, again. City attorney?
In the past, we have allowed citizens to rebuttal, I think.
Okay, Mr. Eller. Our city attorney said that you could rebuttal. Okay, so I'm gonna allow you to come to the podium. Miss, one moment, come to the podium, please.
I'll take your full conversation. At that public nuisance meeting, it was, as I was walking off, was, well, he doesn't even have water. I think you stepped up and said that. Water is pooled at Red Tag. That's not my fault. I pay water. So it was pooled at that point in time. So that eliminates trash as well. So you actually stated, however you need to get rid of it, get rid of it. There was no options to set up trash by the street. That was not an option. We can read, I can go back on your, your minutes and actually view it, and I'm gonna post it later to show how that's an incorrect statement compared to today, to then when you said, you need to get rid of it, you need to haul it off. That's what was given. There was nothing set up. So he lied and you just made a blatant lie that there was a setup. Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Sir.
This is a, we can, we can look at, we can look at your, your laws or your rules that are actually.
Mr. Eller, do you know what? We have gone, I've, I've been very, very patient with you.
Because you, you're, you're trying to control something that.
No, I'm not, Mr. Eller. No, you're trying to control the fact that you haven't done what you needed to do in two years.
Does he have the pictures to show his statement? Because I can go stop my phone and show you the progress pictures. Can I, I'm gonna do that. Can I do that?
No, no, sir.
So.
Mr. Eller, I think you need to just address whether or not you want the council to give you the additional time.
Well, well, the fact was that, like I said, he blatantly lied to the facts that his own code enforcement, not, not his, Justin Jackson was bit by the dog. So was code enforcement able to come out, is what he said to the operator on the phone whenever I was talking to her. She ended up saying, did code enforcement come out? I said, no, I didn't know that I was meeting with code enforcement. So ended up that code enforcement, as I left the property at like 3 o'clock that day, because I'd been there since maybe 9:00 or so, a little bit earlier, because I was still doing some stuff. So from about 9:00 o'clock, I'd worked till about 3:00 that day. As I left, code enforcement turned on that block. I backed up. So whenever I went there, she said, you made drastic improvements. So while he sits there and says, nothing's been done, I'm gonna post all that information in those pictures and show the difference on what I did do, because he's a blatant liar. Because, because the conversation, he didn't wanna hear the 45 days. I didn't say I wanted additional 45. I said, I talked to Mr. Feldschall and he said, how long would it take? And I said, 30 to 45 days. Well, I'm not doing that. I said, so you're the one that makes the call for this, 30 to 45 days, because you don't want it done? That's what I asked him. He's a liar, plain and simple. He needs to be fired for that. But that's what I'm trying to tell y'all. I'm coming to y'all with facts. That's it. I'm not begging nobody for nothing. Do what you wanna do, but I ain't begging nobody.
Thank you, Mr. Eller. Okay, so again, we have number 2, 10, 20, 22. And so I'd like to make a motion.
Mayor, can you close the public hearing first?
I'm sorry. We will close the public hearing.
And we'll read that.
And I'm gonna read item number 11.
10.
10? Item number 10, may I have the reading, please?
Yes, Mayor. City council, after conducting a public hearing, considered the ordinance to declare the following 39 structures to be unsafe structures in order to, the owners to rise to said structures within 10 days. If the property owner fails to comply within 10 days, staff is requesting city council authorization to demolish these structures without further notification to the property owner or city council action. Additionally, if the property owner of a structure requests and is authorized by city council to enroll, enroll in a work program, all delinquent taxes shall be paid in full or a payment plan shall be established prior to enrollment in the work program. Enrollment in the work program shall occur within 10 days after the effective date of this ordinance. These structures have been inspected by building codes found to be unsafe according to code. So staff is recommending approval of the ordinance with council exceptions.
Thank you. You've heard the reading. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the request with the exception of 2, 10, 20, and 22.
2, 10, 20, and 22?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor?
Can I make a comment real quick, Mayor?
Sure.
I'd just like to tell Kenneth Coleman, I apologize that you just went through that. This wasn't even an action I don't for you to be here on, and I just wanna tell you I'm sorry, and nobody deserves to go through that. So appreciate the job you do.
Also, thank you, Mr. Coleman. Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number 11, please?
Yes, Mayor. Council considered resolution rejecting the proposal for the, for the lease or purchase and redevelopment of the property located at 555 Main Street. Staff recommends rejected the proposal.
Mr. Manager, if, if I can, this item is meant to be recessed into executive session and then, and then just back down for approval?
Thank you. But ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna recess to executive session. You're welcome to. Well, I'll tell you what, we will. We'll go ahead and do everything else, and then we'll recess to executive session and come back and take this vote, and that way you don't have to wait. So I'm gonna move to public comment. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name when it's time for you to speak. The green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes, and the red light will come on at the end of your three minutes.
I'm Charles Moore, 1995 McFadden, Beaumont, Texas.
My name is Charles Moore. I live at 1995 McFadden Avenue. This address is at the corner of Fourth Street and McFadden. My corner neighbors are the McFadden Ward House, Broussard's Mortuary, and a vacant lot. In October of last year, an illegal tent with no utilities was set up on the vacant lot. This situation has generated a lot of calls to the city and the police by myself and Broussard's Mortuary. Code enforcement and the police say their hands are tied. The Health Department says they won't get involved if it's three people or less. In November, a city trash can appeared on the property. Since it showed up over night and there are no utilities, I assumed it was stolen like the numerous grocery store shopping carts on the property. On February 14th, the trash can was moved to the curbside for pickup service. Because there are no utilities, I called the sanitation department. I was told that, yes, this is illegal and we'll come and get it. One week passed and the can was still there. So I thought someone missed it. They drove by, when they drove by to check it out. I took photos of the trash can location. I included a photo of the trash can ID. I took this package to the sanitation office. They acknowledged the photos, said they didn't need them. They knew where the can was located. Another week passed. The trash can was still there. Called the office again. I was informed that the supervisor told them, keep servicing the trash can. So this was legal per city ordinance 2205062. I asked to speak to the supervisor. Conveniently, the supervisor was out of the office. I gave my name and cell phone number and asked for him to call. So far, no one has called me back. They just want me to go away. Since there's no sewer hookup, I'm concerned about what is being put in that trash can. Also, I get the pleasure of watching someone urinate on my neighbor's fence when I look out my kitchen window. On March 3rd, I was informed by Jim Broussard that he called the sanitation department about the same trash can. No matter what question he asked, their only response was, we're aware of the can. The sanitation department actions are enabling and abetting this illegal setup. If you can't help me with the situation, or cannot tell me where to go for help, can I set up a tent in my yard and not pay my utilities? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm James, sorry.
Mr. Manager, can we investigate as to what the circumstances? Thank you.
Yes, we'll contact the gentleman and have a conversation and investigate.
Sir, we'll contact you. We will contact you. Thank you.
I'm James Callis, 5375 Rose Mary Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
Sorry to keep taking council's time there. I, I did wanna thank everybody, and I'm offering a blanket apology especially to Mr. Councilman Samuel. Sorry to keep taking council's time there. I, I did want to thank everybody and I'm offering a blanket apology especially to Mr. Councilman Samuel. I, I'm really a very easygoing person. I consider myself that. But, um, I've been doing a lot of stuff that the city requires and, uh, the last time I was here, I was here for three different properties. Inspector Boykin of Code Enforcement came to lots one and three on Monday at two P M. with his supervisor and a new trainee. And I'm happy to report lots one and three are now one hundred percent clear. Lot two is underway. I moved a fourteen-foot cargo trailer onto the lot. And I have started removing, uh, and lifting as long as everything is twenty-four inches off the ground. I, I delivered myself a pallet of cinder blocks and three cinder blocks makes about twenty-four inches. So I know I'm gonna be in compliance with that. So I, um, I told you earlier that I retired from the trades and basically that gives me more time to get out of the, of the predicament I am with the city. I do, every one of my projects are permitted projects and, uh, I do know what the city requires. I'm a residential specialist. Uh, I don't do commercial work. I certainly don't do industrial work. But, uh, I, I do want to get to one project at a time. That's my goal. I'd like to build one small house at a time. I have four vacant lots. I bought them a long time ago to put houses. I am a residential specialist and I am a affordable housing specialist. I want to put people in housing. We have a lot of new demands coming to our city. Uh, I hear there's like seventy billion coming in industrial. I would like for some people to move back into Beaumont. I've been here all my life. This is where I'm gonna finish my life. I've got my cemetery plot. I'm in no hurry for that, but I'm prepared for that. So all in all, I want to thank you. Everyone at the city that I deal with has been very courteous. They have given me consideration. I try to show courtesy back. They've got a job to do. I am gonna be compliant on everything. Take care. I hope your daughter's doing good, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Callis.
I'm Caleb Green, twenty-five oh eight Laurel Avenue, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. Um, I've had some very expensive water bills for the past few months, leading, or dating back to last year, twenty twenty-two. And I've tried to get those resolved on several encounters at the, uh, place where we pay the water bill right across the way. But, um, they said that the department that reviewed my bill of receipt from the leak and detection repair that I had done and had to pay for, um, it got denied because there's no supervisor there at whatever unspecified department. And they said that they could do nothing for me, so I came to ask for some type of guidance or assistance.
Well, thank you very much. If you'll just wait after the meeting, we will get someone to speak with you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, at this time, we will, um, I guess we'll have council member come in or just go ahead and recess.
It's totally up to you, but, uh.
That's all of our public comments, so. Yeah, we're, I'm gonna go ahead and do, uh, council member comments and I'll start with you, Councilmember Neal. Thank you. Councilmember Samuel.
I have no comment.
Councilmember Feldshaw?
No comment, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
You know I have a few comments. So I, I do want to speak to something I recently experienced at a gas station and I will thank Kenneth Williams and staff for addressing it. But I was recently at a gas station and a citizen approached me and he approached me pretty upset due to the fact that he reported something in twenty twenty-one that I sent to staff and staff told me it was taken care of, but the reality was he showed me pictures and magnitude that it wasn't taken care of. So I did report that to Kenneth Williams, Chris Boone. They jumped immediately on it and they reached out to the citizen. I want to tell y'all thank you. But the gentleman was pretty irate with me. He used some profanity, but the reality is I'm elected official. Now I gotta have thick skin and I gotta make sure I hold our staff accountable to do what they said they were gonna do. So I just want to reassure that we got that addressed and we will get that taken care of for that gentleman. Uh, but on a positive note, we just had Mural Fest in Beaumont, Texas. That's one of the biggest events that the city of Beaumont has experienced. It brought a lot of life to the city. It showed that our city is moving in a new direction and our city isn't dead. It's ve, is very much so alive. I want to shout out Stacy Lewis Senior in the crowd today. He had his I Be Love Basketball Youth League and his league ended on this weekend and he had little teams and youth from all over the community competing in a positive way in that gym. I want to say thank you personally while you were here for what you do with our kids in the community, okay? I also want everybody to know that BU is going to state this weekend for the third time straight. And I think we need to give the city a round of applause and the city needs to be proud. Uh, this morning, uh, we had our first strategic plan meeting and I know we've done them in the past, councilmen, but I want to say Kenneth Williams, thank you and staff. Thank you for actually getting together and us working on the strategic plan and the vision for the city of Beaumont as far as economic development, park improvements. What would we like to see our city be, not only the next year, but five years and all the way out to fifteen years? So I think it's important that the city know that we're not only thinking now, we're thinking fifteen years in the future. So I want to thank staff for that. And lastly, uh, the gentleman who just came to the podium, it's a young man by the name of Johnny Coco. He's a actual artist and he has over twenty thousand followers via social media. So I wanted to let you know, my man, much respect to what you do for the culture, much respect for what you do for the community. And from the city of Beaumont, I'm letting you know as a council member, I'm proud of you. Keep cultivating the culture, all right?
Thank you. Councilmember Gitts.
I also want to compliment, uh, the city staff, uh, as well as, uh, Men Day or Die?
Men Day.
Men Day. Men Day for their role in bringing Mural Fest to downtown. It was a, uh, a well-attended event and, uh, you know, there's a lot of art out there to take a look at now. Um, also, um, wanna, uh, congratulate the Beaumont Community Players on their production of Sister Act. It's a play that they're putting on and, uh, I got to participate in it. It is in a cameo role where the, I got to be the pope, which was entertaining to say the word. So, um, yeah, you know, I, I could not resist the temptation but to get to middle, the middle of the stage and yell la hiem because a Jewish pope, you know. But, um, it was a lot of fun. There's a lot of talent out there. Uh, the, not just the actors and the actresses, but the musicians. It's, you know, hard to compare it to what it might be like if you go to Broadway and see a play. But I'm telling you, it's, it was an incredible performance. Also, uh, I could not attend the symphony this Saturday night, uh, because of my wife's illness. But I understand that on very short notice, the Symphony of Southeast Texas uh, did an incredible job with finding a replacement artist and I'm sure the mayor's gonna have something to say about that. I won't steal her thunder. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gitts, and Councilmember Samuel.
Well, I don't want to steal your thunder, uh, either.
No, you go ahead.
But I did, uh, there was a lot going on in Beaumont this weekend. Uh, again, the Mural Fest was fantastic. It is twice as big as it was last year, so it's growing, uh, very much. And also, um, the organization that put on the car and bike show at Terrill Park.
L.A. Productions.
L.A. Productions. It was a huge success. A lot of people were out there, had some nice cars, uh, nice bikes. Uh, so that was good. And then the symphony, that was, um, it was quite different. Uh, uh, Pebo Bryson, uh, an R and B singer, uh, was there with the symphony. And it turned out to be a very huge success. Uh, the parking lots were full, uh, both sides and even the Civic Center parking lot was full. So a lot was going on this weekend and I have to commend Dean and the convention and visitors, uh, staff as well as all of the city of Beaumont staff for all that they did and all that they are doing to make Beaumont better, so.
And then Dancing with the Stars Friday night.
I didn't see that. I can't dance.
It was, it was packed. The Civic Center was packed. It was a couple of thousand people in there.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
And Mr. Coleman, I'd like to apologize as well. You know, I take pride in, you know, protecting our staff and making sure things stay respectful for. I'd like to apologize and I already reached out to the city attorney. We need to look at, you know, strengthening some of those ordinances and things of that magnitude, so thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Turner, for, for, uh, your kind comments. And thank you for your honest feedback and what we do at the city. So thank you for, for that information. And I apologize to you for having to go through that at the service station, uh, going through that. But I will say I spent forty-five minutes of my life after that on the phone with them too, so. So our goal is to get things done and make people feel like that they're being responded to and their issues are being addressed and, and we're doing what we should do. Just, just for note and for the public, whenever someone comes to the, uh, podium to speak and they have, uh, something that the city should do, we automatically follow up with that now. We gather information. We go ahead and contact them if they have a request or something. So that's because we don't say anything, don't mean we're not following up. It's just a employee policy now. We get that information to follow up. They'll follow up questions, we'll ask them, but I want council to feel comfortable that we are addressing, uh, issues that come before us. The strategic plan, I'd like to thank council for your patience and your time. I know your time is very, very valuable. We had the council there, all the council members there, uh, today that could be there. And, uh, because it's, it's, you know, it's not the work that gets the biggest attention, but it's the, it's the making of sausage that's gonna take the city into the future. So I thank each and every one of you for taking time out of your valuable day to do that. And tomorrow, some more time, so it's gonna pay off big time for the city. So other than that, I'd just say, go BU, win state.
Thank you. Ms. Reed? Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Yeah, just real briefly echo, there was a lot of great stuff going on in our city last weekend for sure. But I just wanted to, um, kind of congratulate Men Day and partnering with the C V B. And there's a lot of, a lot of city support from different departments to make that work, but it was a, a great event.
Mr. June Ellis? Mr. Barkoviac? Mr. Semino? Mr. Broussard? Thank you. Well, I would like to say, uh, to Mr. Williams and to the staff on the strategic planning. Uh, we were in this morning from eight to twelve and, um, it's a, it's a great plan. I can't wait to see, once it's all formulated and it comes together, uh, what the result is gonna be and we get to present it, uh, to the citizens of Beaumont. It's gonna also help us on budgeting, uh, for next year also. So, uh, I look forward to that and thank you, uh, Mr. Williams and staff. I also like to say, um, I did attend Dancing with the Stars. I did attend Mural Fest. And I did attend Saturday night, Mr. Pebo Bryson, who is, uh, two-time Oscar winner, two-time Grammy winner, uh, six gold records and a whole lot of other accolades. As I told AJ, if you did not know who the, who the time in Mars Day was, you really don't know who Pebo Bryson is.
My mama took my tickets.
So, um, but a lot of you have heard, uh, Pebo Bryson. He won the Oscar for Beauty and the Beast. He sung the theme song for Beauty and the Beast. And so he's an old seventies, uh, R and B singer and then came into the Disney world. But, uh, us of age, we know who he is. We do know him, but it was a wonderful weekend and the orchestra was amazing with, uh, Chelsea Tipton and, um, it, it was, it was just wonderful. And then at the last minute, he was only contacted last Thursday to fill in for Marilyn McCoo and, uh, Billy Davis, who took sick and could not fly to get to Beaumont. And so kudos for Southeast Texas, um, uh, orchestra for that replacement at the last minute. It was a great replacement. Also, I would like to say, um, I will also be playing the pope in Sister Act. So we're gonna have a female pope on March tenth. I have a cameo spot in Sister Act on Friday night. And so we'll see how it is to have a female pope on Friday night. So come and check me out, Pope. Pope Gitts. Also, um, go Beaumont United. How awesome is that to go to state or on their way to state, uh, three times in a row? And, uh, the last time that happened was in nineteen eighty-two. Um, I would like to say that there is a chartered bus. Mrs. Kay Gilbert will be at Beaumont United High School Main Gym today from six to eight P M. to sign up for riders. A charter bus will be traveling to San Antonio on Friday, March tenth, leaving at one o'clock. The round trip cost to ride will be a hundred dollars. It does not include your cost of the ticket to get into the game. But if they win, then the bus will be leaving again at two P M. on Saturday. So if you're interested in riding the charter bus, you can go to Beaumont United today from six P M. to eight P M. to sign up. And she did say this was all adult riders. And I have Ms. Mary Williams that's in the back of the room, um, who also was with me with the proclamation to Mr. Pebo Bryson. So not only did Mary, um, get her program autographed, but Mary brought her two cassette tapes that she brought in from, that she purchased in Germany while she was serving in the army. And she said this is what she would listen to, uh, while she was in Germany. And, uh, I think she's kind of calmed down a little bit. She's still back there blushing. But, uh, it was a highlight, uh, of her life, something that, uh, she told me she'll never forget. And, um, Mary, kudos to you. So at this time, we are gonna recess into executive session. Thank you so very much for coming and go out and spread the love and we're gonna come back and take a vote on item number eleven, the AT&T Building. Thank you for coming.
Resume from executive session. The city manager, would you please read item number 11?
Yes, Mayor. Council considered resolution rejecting the proposal for the lease or purchase and redevelopment of the property located at 555 Main Street. Staff just recommends rejecting the other proposal based on the following reasons: the proposed purchase price is eight twen- eight hundred twenty seven thousand is less than half what the city purchased. Therefore, proposals did not meet main requirements of the request for proposals which included providing a level of investment with detailed budget, a construction budget, and proof of financial viability and capacity. Proposes financing for the project is partially contingent upon unnamed and unsecured public grants and other city-related participation, and proposes four-year timeline to complete the project and not meet the city's maximum timeframe of three years. Staff is recommending not approval or approval of...
Approval to reject.
Approval of the resolution to reject.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number 11. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the rejection.
May I have a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We will now recess into executive session. Thank you.